To all attendees, this is a formal meeting of the council and I can advise that members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak during public open session, but not at other times. The meeting is being filmed and by being present, attendees are deemed to have agreed to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings. And I can advise that attendees should not disclose any personal information of individuals as this would infringe the data protection rights of that individual. Now, I please ask everyone to mute their microphones when not speaking. Okay, item number one, apologies for absence, I'll read through them and just so we've got them. councillor Barrett, councillor Foster, councillor Knight and councillor Patel. And we, I believe we've got councillor Skilton joining online and councillor Albone joining online. I think he did pop up on the screen earlier, so hopefully he'll be able to join us where possible. Item number two, declarations of interest, any pecuniary or non pecuniary interests relating to business this evening? Nope, okay, great. Right, into item number three, town mayor's announcements. Got quite a bit to mention actually this month, so do bear with me. It's been quite a busy period for external events and civic events. I attended the St Neat Armed Forces Day civic reception a few weeks ago, which was a sort of regional event there at St Neat, which was fantastic and ended up staying there for about four or five hours, it was so good. And the weather certainly helped as well. I was invited to attend the Bedfordshire Scouts AGM a couple of weeks ago as well, which is very well attended, both by scouting community but also by other civic figures. And Mayor of Bedford, Tom Wooton was there, Chair of Central Beds, Kevin Collins, amongst other people as well, so that was very useful. I also had the opportunity to speak at the pupil forum at Biggleswade Academy two weeks ago as well. And there's some very interesting questions about the town, the role of mayor, what the town council does. And that was from year one to year six pupils and they were quite insightful, so that's good news for the future, I think, there. And then some of you will have also seen, in fact, were there on the day that I opened the Pocket Park and Linear Wood over towards the sort of Saxon Drive area of town, London Road. And if you haven't been up there recently, do go and see it, it's fantastic the work the Public Realm team have done to sort of transform that area. And Linear Wood is also where the bikes that used to be on the market square are now located, if anybody remembers, remembers those have been refurbished and relocated and look really great. And then also, for those of you who I saw on the weekend, we had the Victory Day 80 event in the town square on Saturday, which I think was very well supported by the town and townsfolk, et cetera. So fantastic acts and entertainment on the stage. I want to thank all the council officers involved in that, so there was Public Realm and there was the office staff and others as well involved in different bits of that. And as well as the sort of twinning element that was sort of, how can I put it, wrapped around that particular event as well, both with the mayoral speeches on Saturday, but also the two social events on the Friday and the Saturday as well. So I think that was a very good, you know, very good event to do and very good thing to host as well. And on the twinning issue, I just wanted to just to show this to council, so it's kind of on the record that Renata Tonica-Boss, who's the Chair of the Twinning Association in Erlensay, but also an Erlensay Town Councillor, presented to the council this amazing book of Biggleswade twinning. I know a couple of colleagues have seen this already and there's a couple of familiar figures, in fact, three or four familiar figures in this book over the years that people have recognised. And obviously this will sit with the town council now going forward, but I just wanted to show it to all because it was a wonderful presentation on Saturday that I was given. So we can all have a look at that maybe later on. And then very finally, I'd also want to just welcome Ernest this evening, I think as chairing, sorry, chairing, I'm chairing, clerking indeed, the full town council meeting. So I know he's done TCM and some other things before, but welcome to clerking the full, first full council meeting as well this evening. So, great, okay, thank you very much. So on to item four, public open session. There's no one online, there's no one here, okay. Item number five, we don't have an invited speaker, so we can move on from that. Number six, members' questions. Oh, councillor Agnew.
Good evening, thank you very much for your report. First of all, I just wanted to let everyone know that also a couple of mayors from the E and L A have been in contact and thanked us, so I just would like to pass on this message. Secondly, I wanted to raise maybe a little bit in advance the issue of the circuits, power circuits for the pre-Christmas events. You know how we discussed the Christmas lights events quite well in advance because of the planning issues? And I would like actually for us to prepare a motion for joint committee because it's coming up very soon, so that we are very clear about where exactly we might have shortages and issues and put the actions plan and so that we actually start this dialogue well in advance, if possible, if we could just record this so that we can track it in the meetings forthcoming months. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Agnew. I think Ernest, you're able to take a note of that and make sure that gets carried forward to, I think probably the next town council meeting, but certainly we need to look into that well before the Christmas light situation.
Thank you, Chair, that is noted.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, gone, I think, was it? You had a question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If I may follow on from what you were saying about the events on Saturday, I think it would be appropriate for the council to formally thank all our staff for having performed, both the office staff who turned out and also the public realm, because a lot of them started at almost pre daylight on Saturday morning and went through a good 12 hour shift or more. So I think we should formally thank all those who put in such a tremendous effort on the day when normally they would have been having their weekend off.
I quite agree, thank you councillor Strawne, I think we'll get that noted and I've certainly sent personal thanks, but I'll send something else on behalf of the council, but it will go in the minutes definitely. And I think Ernest can sort of put that forward as well, thank you. councillor Russell, do you have a question still?
Well, I think we agreed as a council that those of us who are on outside bodies should report formally to the council, which we haven't necessarily done in the past. So I have attended the Fendreves annual meeting, so could that go as an item for information on the next agenda, please?
Okay.
And also yesterday councillor North and I had another meeting with Norville Parish Council about the underpass. So if that could be on the agenda, then we can report back.
Okay, that would be very helpful actually. Asia, have you got the note of that to put on the next agenda as well? Thank you, thank you very much, councillor Russell, thank you. Okay, item number seven then, minutes and recommendations of meetings. So we'll go for the 3rd of June, seems like a lifetime ago now, but it was only a month. So I'll start on page eight. Page nine. Then moving into the 10th of June. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13. Page 14. And then page 15. Okay, do we all, so all accurate, yes. Sorry councillor Strawne, you say something?
Page 16 as well.
Oh, sorry, oh my apologies, yes, there is, page 16, thank you. Okay, great, we'll now move on to any.
Point of order.
Yes.
Also to approve the minutes and you should stop by signing the same, forgive me.
Yes, I mean, I've, I normally sign them, Asia, haven't I signed them before outside of the meeting? Yeah, so I do, I do sign them as a.
I think that formally we should have, the minute should be approved or authorised to sign them.
Okay, I was going to get on to the, any items outstanding, but I can, we can do that now if you want to approve the minutes as they are. Move it, move it, move it through the minutes, okay, thank you. Great, okay, so any items, any matters arising then? 3rd of June. So page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Sorry, sorry, page 10 being the 10th of June. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13. Sorry councillor Strawne, page 14, is it?
No, page 13.
Page 13, sorry.
Item 9A, the call, the writing about the health hub.
Okay, yes.
Have we had any response?
Good spot, Ernest, do you have any information on that?
No, no response yet from, from officers.
Okay. Could, could we note that so that we can pick it up on the next minutes?
Yes.
Just to see that we actually have get a response from them.
Yeah, yeah, great. Asia, have you got that, so we can follow that? Thank you, that's great. Thank you councillor Strawne. Page 14. Page 15. Page 16. Okay, great, thank you. All happy with that? Yep, move it, okay, move it, great. Okay, item nine, items for consideration. 9A, public work loan board for members to receive and consider a report from the Head of Finance. So I'll let Ernest have a few minutes as he's with us tonight and then we can have a further discussion, okay? Over to you Ernest.
All right. Thank you, Mr Chairman. So the, I'll try and be brief. The main purpose of this loan is to refurbish the 14 play areas, including upgrading the outdated equipment and introducing a site in age appropriate ones. Officers have received some support from the Chief Executive of BRCC. He thinks this loan or this project will be very supportive and will bring many benefits to young people and families of the town. And all the play areas, in terms of the project summary, all the play areas could remain open throughout the improvement of, throughout the improvement works, with only the impeded play equipment being shut off. So the project will not, the aim of the project is not to close a whole play area, for instance, Brunet or Franklin, so that's not happening. Only the equipment being changed will be shut off for the public, only for health and safety reasons. And during the town council meeting on 21st of January 2025, members resolved to support officers in making application of this particular loan. Also during the 33 meeting on the 13th of May 2025, members reaffirm the resolution by still confirming that officers can continue to apply for this loan. And members also resolved that if the loan application is successful, the actual drawdown should come back to council for a final resolution before a drawdown can happen or before officers can really draw down the loan. Officers have received a letter from the Ministry of Housing and Communities and local government confirming the borrowing request for the 79,528 has been approved. And in terms of budgeting, there is sufficient funds to really pay for the annual repayment. And this would be a portion because we are in the third month of the financial year. In terms of recommendation, it's for members to agree and proceed with drawing down the sum of the 79,528 from the P, from the, from the PWLB loan to enable the final refurbishment of the play equipment in the remaining play areas. Thank you.
Thank you Ernest, that's overview. Okay, any questions, thoughts from members on this? councillor Jones.
Thank you, really comprehensive report, so thank you. I have a query about the survey and the results from it, so I'm just keen to understand the 44% who did not support the application. Was there the opportunity for them to provide reasoning for that in the survey? And can we understand some of that? Or was it as simple as a yes, no? I can't recall.
Yeah, thank you very much, that was a good question. Yes, please, yep, there was opportunity to provide reason, but none of them gave any reason why they don't want to support the law.
Thank you.
councillor Russell.
14 is a lot of play areas, I haven't been involved in the detail, I'm not a member of PLOS, but I just wonder whether we need to draw down the whole loan at once or whether we could have a bit more detail given to council about how this is going to be done. There's a quotation and specification, but when is this work going to be done? Can we draw down it in parts rather than drawing down the whole 79,000 at once, which will obviously help with the cost of the loan? So I'm wondering whether we could have a bit more information and I'm loathe to say it in a way, but I think we need to defer this item so that we can have a bit more information about the phasing of this and how we can, if we can draw it down in two or three tranches.
Thank you. Is that, is that a proposal councillor Russell?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is that a second, councillor Thompson?
I'm a bit concerned also, it says we're preemptively increasing the tax, the council tax here, and I don't think that's quite, we shouldn't be doing that yet. We should, we should be looking at that with, as a whole, in the, when we look at the budgeting next year, or early, very early next year, rather than preloading now. And I'm also not sure what the, what the criteria was for the survey, is it just a, if it had been 51, 49, like another famous vote, would that have gone through? I don't know. But it seems, it seems, I would have thought if it was really popular, there would be slightly more than 40, 56% people wanting it and 44% didn't want it. So not a resounding victory, is it?
Thank you, councillor Agnew.
I'd like to agree with councillor Russell about the deferring of this item. Also coming up from the point of view that was expressed by councillor Knight in his email today, but unfortunately he didn't make it circumstantially to this meeting. He was also raising the questions about the survey, the survey as part of this bigger picture and how the information about the ages of the children and et cetera has been obtained. I think we just ought to discuss it more in detail, especially the implication of such a big amount of money having been drawn all at once, because clearly a lot of our members, maybe I'm speaking on behalf of everyone, do not have a very good idea about each individual playground we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay councillor North.
Thank you Chairman. Yeah, well, basically I agree with, with previous speakers, I would just take issue slightly with councillor Russell though, if I may, in that she is asking for, she has asked for a little bit more information and I think we need quite a lot more information actually.
Disagree.
And like which play areas are we talking about? Exactly what equipment is intended to install in each of those play areas? And it says here, old play equipment will be replaced by exciting new wood-based play equipment, but is that really justified? It may be old, but if it's serviceable, it's safe, it's not worn out, why are we replacing it? I think we need more information on that as well, about what exactly is, is going to be replaced and how, how is it justified that it should be replaced?
Okay, I think they're all good questions. Ernest, do you want to sort of comment on anything related to the survey and anything else? And then I noticed councillor Jones, I think councillor Strawne got a question, then I'm conscious we have a motion on the table, so make it quick.
Yep, and in terms of the survey, obviously it's about 130 people, which, which is very small number, but when it comes to the final decision, it's up to council anyway in terms of guidance. So the survey is just to get a feel of the population, but in terms of the final decision, it's always down, down to members. So that's what we've been told. So irrespective of the outcome of the survey, we've been told, even though it helps with decision, but it's not the main reference because of the number. And, and also regarding the time, we were told by the supplier that this work can be done within a very shortest possible time. So in terms of impact, it's very, very limited across the 14 play areas. And the names of the play areas is on, on the code and the specification. So it does mention the various names and the, and the places where these particular equipments would be changed. And so that's what I wanted to say, but, but, I break the quotation down specifically so that at least members can, can see.
Okay, thank you Ernest. Councillor Jones used to have a question and then councillor Strawne.
Thank you, councillor North helped actually with this question and I'm completely in agreement about understanding the roadmap or project timeline to have that mapped out, I think that will help. I'm a bit nervous about pushing it too far down the road, because I appreciate there's a lot of work that's been done in this already, so I just, I suppose I'm mindful of that. And my question is, and I don't know if this can be answered now Ernest, is it actually possible that we can draw down PWLB in increments as an actual technicality? Is that something that we can do? Thank you.
Yes, please, yep, that's going to be done. And actually, the letter this states that we have up to a year to really draw down the law, so it can be done.
Okay, thank you. councillor Strawne then.
I think the fact that we can draw down within the year is actually the most important part of this, because I believe that we do need to upgrade our play equipment generally and the overall cost for 14 areas doesn't seem that high compared with what other monies that we've spent. But I think it's right that we do actually scrutinise what we're looking at. And of course, we have got, we have provided in our budget for the loan, whether we take it, whether we'd taken it two months ago or whether we took it, take it right at the end of the year. So we're quite covered in terms of the budgeting process and that would also reflect on to future years, so it wouldn't actually appear to be an increase in the council tax in future years. But I think it's quite right that we actually do scrutinise and look and have an proper understanding of what's there. And as far as the survey is concerned, I think that's much more a question of getting the approval, the majority approval, so that we get the PWLB loan approved rather than necessary. It's not a survey of saying what's needed, it's more a question of saying, getting, satisfying the loan requirements, that we have to go out to the public for a survey before we can draw down the loan. And I imagine if the vote had been the other way, even by 49 to 51, it wouldn't have been approved. It's, I think we should just be very conscious that this is about the third application for PWLB loan that we've made and the majority in favour of the loan has decreased each time. And if we went back in another year, I'm not sure that we would actually get that approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a proposal on the, on the table already in relation to deferring it, I don't know if we, councillor Strawne, go on.
Well, I know that there's a specification online, but what I would like to see is just a list of the play areas and what's being done. Simple page of A4. And I think the other thing is that talking to people recently, there's an issue about whether some of the play areas should be refurbished or whether they should be repurposed. And we've talked about, you know, I've talked to people about possible shelter for, you know, teenagers, young teenagers and things like that, because the one that's nearest to my daughter's house never gets used. So are we actually refurbishing that? And as I say, I'm not close enough to the detail and I would have hoped to see exactly what was being proposed. So yes, I move my motion.
Okay, that's great. So we all understand what the motion is, yep. Okay, all right, all those in favour? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move that to a future meeting. Okay, we're on to 9B, which is a highway proposal. We do need to receive and consider this information, so we do need a, some sort of resolution on this. And it's to do with stopping up Biggleswade footpath number 39 and S26 and the creation of bridleway 89 and 58. And there is a map on the reverse, which is I think around the top end of the Stratton Business Park, if I'm correct. councillor Strawne.
Yes, the observation on the map, it would be very helpful if CBC could actually give us a location map pointing out exactly the area that it's dealing with, because I think I've come to the same conclusion as you have.
Yes.
But just putting it in there remotely is not particularly efficient. So that's the observation I've got there, it's not actually being particularly helpful because it doesn't even refer to the part of Biggleswade, it just refers to bridleways and doesn't give it in any context.
I quite agree councillor Strawne, I think our local knowledge is helpful there, but otherwise, yes, you're right, it's a bit, it is a bit vague. Any other questions or thoughts on it? Because we do need to come back with something, so. councillor Russell.
Well, from what I can see from this, they're stopping up the path through the new warehousing units.
Yeah.
And taking it around the outside. And then the next question is, what happens when more warehousing is built? And how much further round is this footpath going to be? And is it going to be viable? And is it really necessary to stop it up through the estate? Could it not be part of the landscaping of the estate? And if they want to create the new footpath as well, that's great, but you know, what's wrong with keeping the existing one?
Yeah. I think that's a fair point about the expansion point, because we know the area is growing and to then sort of sort out a path and then to move it 18 months later or something might be a bit silly. Any other questions or thoughts or, or a proposal perhaps on this? councillor Russell.
But if nobody else is going to say anything, I suggest that we say that we don't think that that footpath should be stopped up, it should be part of the landscaping. Or I think councillor Albon might want to come in, but also that they do create the new footpath, so there's plenty of room for people to walk.
Okay, councillor Albon, thank you for joining us. We could, we can all see you, can we hear you? You're on mute councillor Albon.
Okay, can you hear me now? Yep. Okay, so if I've read this map, I think I have, so the footpath between A and B would be stopped up, but the bridleway would be created, covers A to B and then C, D, E, F as well. So my reading of it is that the footpath will be converted, the footpath which goes from A to B will be converted to a bridleway. So I think.
councillor Albon, I think I only got about sort of half of what you were saying, it was, it was a bit cracking. Yes, if you sit further back, it was a bit clearer. I don't know whether it's.
Okay.
I know, we've lost it again, sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that was a little bit better, it's just, it's a bit, I think, yeah.
Right, the, I believe the footpath will be converted into a bridle path and then connected to the other sections on the map as a bridle path. So I think it will still be there. That's my reading, but other people might have other, other ideas.
Okay, thank you for that, we heard that last bit really clearly, so thank you very much.
Well, if that's the case, then maybe our motion should be that we expect that it will be converted to a bridle path from the information, from the bridleway from the information we've been given and that the new bridleway will be implemented.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay, we're all clear on that, because we, we do, we do need to consider this, so I'll take that as a motion, we got a second of that? councillor Agnew, great, thank you. Okay, all those in favour of the motion, thank you. That's put forward, yeah, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Great. Okay, 9C, a new, new street traders' application from Mr Softy Woburn. We need to, we'll receive and consider an application for a street traders' licence from Central Beds. councillor Jones.
So I'm just a bit confused by this one, if I'm honest with you.
Okay.
So I've obviously missed part of the jigsaw puzzle.
So I've obviously missed part of the jigsaw puzzle. But the piece that bugged me more than anything was, and I'm sure that CBC would take this into account anyway as they do it, is the comment in the box eighteen, where it says, give details about your food handling experience today. And it says, none so far, but I'm currently doing my level two food hygiene. But that only takes between two to four hours to complete for a level two. So that makes me worry just from a training perspective. And then that makes me worry about the whole thing. So I'm sure there's lots of other concerns, and I'm not sure which of them are valid enough to support, supporting or not supporting the application. But it just, something feels a bit.
Well, on that, I mean, I'll comment from the chair for a second. I mean, I noticed that in the gentleman's application, the, there was, there's a question there about whether you've done a central beds food hygiene course, and it was a no.
Yeah.
So I mean, I assume there are obviously other food hygiene courses, but it, I assume that question's there for a reason.
Well, it depends if the criteria is it has to be a central beds one, or it could just be a nationally recognized level two food hygiene, which I made the assumption it was a nationally recognized one. But again, I'm not a central beds.
No, I, I think there were certainly some gaps in the application, but I'll, I'll let others comment further. Council Thomas.
Twenty two says he hasn't traded in any of the town or city. So presumably, no is the answer to the previous question.
Okay. Anything else? There was a rather large passport photo in the application form, but apart from that.
Am I right in thinking that we will write back with support or not support for the application, but ultimately it's up to CBC? And is it similar to planning that we would, there's certain criteria that you can or cannot support?
And I'm, I'm not sure about that aspect, but we are a consultancy in terms of the street trading. But ultimately, it's a central beds decision.
And then in terms of the numbers of ice cream vans on the road, and I think central beds will take care of making sure it's not overpopulated.
What I, I had heard from officers, and they told me privately, so it's, I'm relaying that rather than in a written report, that there were already quite a significant number of ice cream van licenses for traders in the area. I'll put it that way.
That's where my concern is, because if I think to those who just go around the streets, and then those who come on to more private property like the cricket club, for example, things like that in terms of turning up, is it going to be a war of the ice cream? No, I'm not sure. I mean, it's a great fight to have, but I suppose that's my concern. Are we oversaturated? Or is that something central beds would sit over?
Good, good question. I would hope central beds are keeping tabs on that, but I, I suspect not. But Council Russell, do you want to say anything?
Perhaps we can make that comment and say we are beginning to be concerned about a number of ice cream vans. I mean, I think we were concerned as a council with the one that wanted to be trading on the market square all the time. That I understand has gone through. But, you know, I think Counselor Jones is right. It could get silly. So perhaps we could simply make that comment.
Council Strong.
I think the other comment that might be relevant in that respect is in view of the comments and the apparent lack of experience of this particular gentleman doing this kind of thing, and the health and hygiene issues that we would expect central beds to ensure that he's carried out all the appropriate training and courses before he commences trading at all.
I think we can, we can relay that. Any other comments before we move on? Or try and, I guess we'll try and summarize that as a, as a, as a response for Asia to write back. So what, well, I'm not, yes, I'd say something, yeah, what I'm not, what I'm not clear about is whether we're opposing the application or we're in favor of it, or whether we're just wanting to add comments. I think that that's the bit that we'd need clarity on.
We would have no, well, I'll phrase it, say, we have no objection to this, provided there is not an over provision of similar businesses, and that the appropriate, the applicant has all the appropriate certificates and training to actually undertake this task, taking into account health and safety, and indeed the debarring service, the appropriate certificates to be able to deal with children, the debarring service or.
So all the appropriate safeguarding measures. Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're all, it's all clear. So can I have a second of that, please? Okay, Council Jones, great. Okay, all those in favor of the motions that Council Strong outlined? Great, it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to planning applications, number ten, so ten A, Aston Croft, single story rear extension, new windows and doors. Okay, subject to neighbors, okay. Ten B, forty four London Road, conversion to, outbuilding conversion to annex with single story extension. Subject to neighbors, okay. Ten C, one poplar close, two story rear extension. Subject to neighbors, okay. Being queue unit, illuminated signs, advertisement, facia signs, et cetera. Comments? I haven't really got any neighbors, but go on, Council Russell.
Well, it's not in the conservation area.
No, true.
So the internally illuminated is okay.
Yes.
I just wonder whether they're facing the A one, any of them. And that could be sort of putting, but I haven't looked at the map. Are they not?
They're in, in, in wood, are they, to the retail park?
In that, in that case, I'd pose no objection.
Okay. Okay, no objection. Okay, no objection. Ten E, seventy two drove road, part single two story extension, new windows and doors. Okay, subject to neighbors, great. Car park at the A one, A one, A one London Retail Park? I think you mean car park at A one Retail Park, London Road. And I think that's for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Any comments? No objection. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Move, move all those. Yeah, great. Number eleven, planning application outcomes. I think that it's in the separate, yeah, it's in the separate sheet. Was any comments on that? I don't know where we've got to with your pedestrian island, Council Russell. Was that your question?
Given up on that one for a minute.
Okay, go on.
It's still there in the back of my mind.
Go on.
I was just gonna say, I'm bemused about this top item for Lonside Lower School. Awaiting outcome, target date for decision, September twenty four. I mean, I don't know what's going on there, but. Having said that, the Biggleswade Academy won the target date decision was December twenty four. So what's going on with the school's planning applications for this move to two tier? There's some, something there that's not quite where it needs to be.
No, I mean, I, I've had a letter as a resident near Lonside, and I think there are, there are some potential changes they're looking at around the, the buildings and so on. But yeah. Sorry, Council Gosha, sorry.
What's your question about the target date? What was the concern?
I'm just surprised that we're so far past. And what are the issues, you know? And I think the chairman's saying that
Yeah.
there are going to be changes.
I believe so. Yeah, I'm still trying to get to the bottom of where we are with that. But I, I only had that a letter as a resident rather than as a, as a member of the council. Yeah, and of course, with the Biggleswade Academy, we did, we did object to it as a council, but having visited Biggleswade Academy a couple of, couple of weeks ago, I've seen the, the proposed site, and I guess we'll just have to see where it goes with offices. But it has been quite a while. Council Agnew.
Couldn't we just propose for the officers to have a look at this particular table once again? Perhaps the information itself has been wrongfully copied or pasted or whatever. Maybe we could just look at it offline and just consider it as an email exchange if there are no decisions to be made on this particular five items. Because it does look a little bit outdated, but maybe.
Okay. Well, I mean, it is an item for information. It isn't, we don't have to make any decisions. But I mean, I guess Asia, if you could just double check with the information that's, that's there, to make sure the dates are accurate and things. I sometimes things can get lost if, if needs be. Council North.
Yeah, well, I agree with Council Agnew. It does look as though this, it's lacking a bit of care and attention, actually. It makes you wonder whether some of these comments are really up to date and accurate. Certainly, if you look at the last, the very last item, the, what, the one, two, three, the fourth column along is just purely a copy of the one above it. It is obviously not relating to the pointed issue here, which is about.
Yes, about the battery storage system.
Just sloppy.
Yeah, well, there's not, there's not a battery storage system on nineteen High Street, is there?
No.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, we do need a bit of work on that.
With a bit more attention, I think.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. We do need to probably have another look at that, make sure it's been refreshed. Okay, great. Thanks all. Okay, okay, item number twelve, accounts. So I'll pass over to Ernest. We've got the, well, we need to receive and consider the written report from the head of finance. And then we've got the, the financial administration issues there, one to four listed. Over to you.
Right. Thank you, Sir Chairman. So the usual four reports are on, on the council's website. So I, the payment list and the balance sheet and the income statement accounts. So this, this is for period two, which is end of May twenty twenty five. And it's early for, for officers to really project the year and out term. So in, in the absence of any sophisticated profiling, it is assumed that in most cases, the budget will come in line with the actual expenditure at the end of the financial year. And of course, officers will keep an eye on, will keep a constant review. The recommendation is for members to consider and approve the May twenty twenty five report. But when we, June has already ended, so then the next report to, to council, that they will be, the projected out, out term will, will be predicted. And, and in case there are any variances, that, that will be explained as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ernest. Any comments, questions? Council Jones.
Thank you. I just have a question on, on the report. So we've got higher expenditure on a number of items. I'm just assuming that that didn't happen last year. We didn't pay the business rates twice last year. So do we anticipate that for next year? Just thinking ahead for future productions. Is that, is that an anomaly as a one off? Or is that something we need to think about budgeting more accurately for next year?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much. That's a very good question. It is within the budget. Business rates are paid annually. So next year, we will, the council will budget for the business rates as well.
Okay, thank you. Council Strong.
I know I should know this as chairman of the Finance Committee, but is it a requirement to pay the business rates in one annual lump sum? Or could we pay it by direct debit over the twelve months so that we spread the load and have a little bit more money in our account to make some interest on it?
Ernest?
Thank you. It, it, it is paid by, by direct debit. But as, as I come, we normally receive the annual invoice for the total. But in terms of the actual payment, the, the, the CBC normally takes it by, by direct debit.
Is that once a month or is it annually?
Once a month, sorry.
Okay.
Once a month.
Does that help, Council Strong?
I'll speak to the director of finance outside this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more questions? Right, well, we've got the report. Yes, thank you. Another report. Great, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Right, thank you very much. So item thirteen, items for information. We don't have any public open session. No one's turned up in person. Is anyone online, Asia? No. Okay, so we all have a, we need to move to exempt session. Can all have a show of hands to move to exempt session, please?